Mr. Dixon? Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod and Connor, who are both here, helping to make sure the broadcast goes well on Channel 20. So, thank you, guys, for all you do. And just a reminder to hold your questions until after the presentations are done. So, write yourself notes so that you don't forget. And we have meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes from November 6th? Is there consensus to approve these minutes?
Challenge.
Okay.
All right. We will begin with our employee engagement survey results. Dr. Blaylock is here, and you have the floor. He's the head of research at K-12 Insight, and he's been here before. So, glad to have you back.
Thank you again for having me come present to you this evening about the employee engagement survey results. As you mentioned, I'm the head of research from K-12 Insight. We work with about 200 school districts across the country, gathering stakeholder feedback. You also use our Let's Talk as well. That's one of our products as well. But without any further ado, I'll just jump right into it. We ran the employee engagement survey for the second year in a row. The survey was, we had some additional questions that we have added to the survey since, so that we have some additional context, some additional meaning to the specific survey itself. But overall, we define engagement as the connection that individuals have with the profession in general and their current jobs in particular. So, how connected they feel to what it is that they do. Within this survey, we do it in three different pieces. One, we measure overall engagement. Two, we take a look at breaking things down by specific drivers that lead to engagement, and those are around shared values, leadership, communication, feedback and recognition, work environment, and career growth and training opportunities. And then, in the third part, we take a look at breaking the engagement levels down by specific demographic characteristics. For this specific survey within Rockford, we actually add some additional questions as well for teachers and certified staff through the Rockford Education Association to get some feedback for their purposes as well. When we take a look at participation, we have up here both the participation numbers for this current year as well as last year. And below that, what you're actually seeing is response rate by specific participation group. So, for example, last year, 82% of the classroom teachers who received the survey took the survey. This year, 87% of the classroom teachers who received the survey took the survey. There's a lot of questions about this particular issue last year, so we included these data in the report, so you could get an understanding of how the data broke down, as well as the participation rates for each of the subgroups. When we take a look at some of the groups, such as bus drivers, building, maintenance, and transportation, as well as the paraprofessionals and certified staff, we see a little bit of a lower participation rate around those as well. However, those particular staff subgroups are smaller than what you would see with, like, the classroom teacher and pieces like that. So, when we think about the overall engagement, what we do is we take the first nine questions of the survey, and we assign a weighted score to each point of the Likert scale, which goes from strongly agree to strongly disagree, with five points being strongly agree and one point being strongly disagree. We then average that for each individual, so it breaks down that anyone that is above a 4.5 is considered to be highly engaged, anyone who is a 3.5 to 4.5 is considered to be engaged, and anyone less than a 3.5 is considered to be less engaged. So, when we look at the Rockford results for this year and last year, we actually see an exact same breakdown foring level of engagement from last year to this year. When we take a look at our benchmark for a medium-sized district that's defined as districts between 10,000 and 30,000 students, you are, from combined engaged and highly engaged perspective, one percentage point below what we would see from that medium norm from a national sample that we use this with. So, you're pretty close to it. The other thing to consider is that, and I talked about this a little bit last year, is with your student size, your district size, you're right on the bubble with where you would be with a large district. So, you are one percentage point below the benchmark, but it is something to consider that you're very close to being the top threshold of what your district size is. When we look at the comparison over time for the specific items on the engagement scale, you see a lot of similarities from year to year. We see a little bit of agreement, an increase on the feeling of accomplishment. We see a little bit of a decrease in the motivation to contribute more than what's expected. And these are very similar as well. As we go through these results, I'm going to move through this section fairly quickly because the results, for the most part, are very consistent with what we saw last year. I'm going to move to a media portion of the presentation, but I'm going to move through these pretty quickly, and we might refer back to these as we go along. You'll see here with the shared values, again, some very similar results, where you don't see the blue bar. That's a new question that's been added this year. So, we'll move here. You'll see district leaders' actions are consistent with the words. You see a three percentage point increase over last year in combined agreement and strongly agree. Anything you're looking at a one percentage point increase or decrease, it's not really substantial or anything to consider very strongly. So, we move through these, and we see, again, very consistent results with what we saw last year. When we see things like my principal or direct supervisor regularly gives me constructive feedback to improve performance, you see a three percentage point increase. I feel appreciated for my work is a four percentage point increase. So, you'll definitely see some positive trends on some of these items within the drivers themselves as we move through each of these pieces. But really, the point I want to actually focus in on is the focus areas portion of the presentation, because this is the part of the survey that actually makes the data very meaningful. And so, what we do is we talked about that engagement score that we have for each individual. We then take each of the items on the driver side of it, the rest of the items in the survey, and we assign a numerical value to them based on the score that they're given. So, there's an average score for each item, and we end up with a distribution with a high and a low and a median in the middle. We then correlate each of those with the engagement level for each participant, so we end up with a distribution of correlations as well with a high and a low and a median. So, when we look at this four-by-four, this two-by-two box here, that upper left-hand quadrant is those that are above the median in average score and above the, or below the median in average score and above the median in correlation to engagement. So, these are the items that are bringing engagement down, that you want to focus in on for improvement. The green box below that, those are the ones that are above the median in weighted score or average score and above the median in correlation to engagement. So, these are the things going well. These are the things you want to keep doing. So, with that said, we jump into the areas of strength. These are the ones that are above the median in average score and above the median in correlation to engagement. The ones that you see bolded are items that were actually in the same exact place last year, so some strength around principals' interactions, action principals being consistent with their words, so a lot of good interactions with principals that we see here. This is very consistent with the research that we see in the literature about people feeling more connected to their school and less connected to the district. People tend to feel a very strong bond with the school and tend to feel a little distance or having a hard time dealing with the district itself, because they see that environment and they're part of that environment. Some continued areas of strength, again, a lot of good, positive interactions between staff members and their principals and their direct supervisors. When we look at the opportunities for improvement, these are the items that are below the average score on the driver rating and above the median in correlation to engagement. We see a lot of issues around morale. We see some recognition pieces. We see some consistency. I've called out district leaders' actions consistent with the words. That's actually something that has increased from last year, but it is still something that is having a negative impact on engagement, so something to focus in on as we move forward through the school year to try to make improvement for engagement. Some continued opportunities for improvement here. We see the import on the shared values aspect of it, some feedback and recognition. Remember, we see feel appreciated for my work had a four percentage point increase, but we're still seeing it as something that is having somewhat of a negative impact on engagement. However, we look at that as 3.46, and the median is 3.66. So, it's getting pretty close to the threshold of actually moving itself up to that green slide right there. So, it's getting close to the bubble for that. The remainders of these are secondary, meaning that they're above or below the median as far as their average score, but below the median in correlation to engagement. So, there are things to focus in on, but they're not having as much of an impact on engagement. When we look at the breakdown of engagement by demographics, we take a look at this impact right here. When we look at our national norms, this is actually fairly consistent with what we see, where those that are working with a district less than one year or one to two years are fairly engaged. They're your young idealists. They're out there, they're ready to go save the world. As they hit the three to five years and go on beyond that, there are some other life things that we see that come in: marriage, kids, other competing needs. And we start to see that engagement level go down. When we get to that 11-to-15 or 16-to-20-year mark, we start to see engagement come back up again. People are more engaged and dedicated to their careers. The low point of all engagement across any demographic characteristic is on this slide, and that's at the 11-to-15-year mark, which is actually a three to four percentage point decline from what we saw for that one last year. When we look at engagement role by comparison over time by role of last year compared to this year, the biggest thing to note here is that you see an eight percentage point increase for central office staff, so central office staff feeling much more engaged this year. Same thing with the small percentage of people from bus driver, building, and maintenance and transportation that took it. But really, the biggest noteworthy thing right here was a seven percentage point decline in engagement from your building administrators. So, that's something to really think about in looking at that decline in engagement from that particular population. The additional questions from the REA come next, and similar to what we saw earlier, there's a few of these that jump up three to four percentage points, but no really big decreases or increases on these. And then, there was a question around cellphone usage and the impact on the learning environment. Only classroom teachers and certified staff members answered this question, but it really, you can see that a really large chunk of them felt that it actually had a negative impact on the learning environment, on student engagement within the learning environment. So, some positive trends that we see in these data is that we see that four percentage point increase in feeling appreciated for the work. We see a four percentage point increase in the district encourages continued education professional growth, and we see a four percentage point increase in the working in an atmosphere where there is mutual respect among staff. When we reported these results out last year, we saw a lot of negativity around the district on those areas of improvement slides, so seeing some positive trends on the district side of things is very encouraging. Some additional positive trends is district staff and school employees communicate well with each other, as well as the PLC being a valuable use of time. Some of the opportunities for improvement, I called these out a little bit, one of which is percentage of building administrators who are engaged or highly engaged, and the other one being I am proud to work at this school. So, we saw a seven percentage decline, point decline, like I said, on the building administrators, and a three percentage point decline on the proud to work for the school. For all staff, we see the exact same results as last year, so it's very consistent. And as I called out earlier, from the staff members that are from 11 to 15 years, we see that large decline from one year to the next. So, the other thing that we added to this survey this year is a concept referred to as the net promoter score. This is something we've been adding to a variety of our different surveys to really, that we borrowed from the business community. The idea is that it serves as a proxy for confidence within the school and the district, and can potentially be connected to growth. So, there was two questions on the survey, one of which is how likely are you to recommend Rockford Public Schools 205 to a friend or colleague? And for those that were working within the schools, they were asked how likely they were to recommend their school to a friend or colleague. This works on a 0-to-10 scale, with zero being not at all likely and 10 being extremely likely. And then, what we do is what we cluster each of the scores into categories. So, 0 to 6 is considered detractor, 7 to 8 is considered passive, and 9 to 10 are to be considered to be promoters. So, we then calculate a net promoter score by subtracting the percentage of detractors from the percentage of promoters, and it gives us a score between negative 100 and positive 100. For this particular survey, the school net promoter score was 8. The district net promoter score was negative 29. You'll see in that data in the middle, when we broke the data by school, down by school, it ranged from people recommending their school from being positive 87 to negative 80. For a district perspective, it ranged from negative 16, positive 16, to negative 76. So, we saw a wide range across the district for both the district and the school. When we took a look at each of these as far as relationship between net promoter scores from the both, there was a .6 correlation between school net promoter score and district net promoter score, so a fairly strong correlation there as well. There's also a fairly strong correlation between school net promoter score and engagement score, which was about a .62. And then, the biggest correlation, the strongest correlation, was actually between engagement and district net promoter score, which was about .71, which is a very strong relationship when you're looking at a correlation. So, this is the breakdown here of the promoters, passives, and detractors at the aggregate level for the district. As you can see there to the right, you see the 8 and the negative 29 for the district, so basically meaning people are more, more people would recommend against the district than they would recommend for the district as well. A lot of opportunity to swing that in the other direction, especially when you look at the passives. They're your swing votes that you really want to work in. They could go either way, so you want to try to do everything you can to push them to being in that promoter role. I talked about the drivers leading to engagement. One of the things to consider is mathematically, based on those correlations, you can also take a look at those drivers to not only drive engagement, but also to increase your net promoter score at the district and school level. So, before I turn to Dr. Jarrett, I want to see if we have any questions on the employee engagement survey or the results I've just presented.
Is it okay if I just finish it off?
Yeah, sure. I should talk to the questions.
I could have come up with a smoother transition than that.
Yes.
Well, so this all comes down to our vision. We want to be the first choice for all families, and part of that involves the engagement of our employees and whether there's the final piece of the conversation about net promoter score. So, I think this is really important work, and we're excited to have this data because it provides a lot of opportunities. And here's what we're doing with it. You know, as we look at next steps, we have a very clear cycle that we're going through here, and right now, we're just wrapping up the analysis and identifying the growth opportunities and building an action plan, as you can see, those three steps after conducting the survey. And then, we're going to be progress monitoring to see where we go, and we're going to see if we move the needle across the board, so you can see that cycle of continuous improvement. And just to describe what we've already done, you can see the survey window. If it's in green, it means we've done it. If it's in gray, we haven't quite completed it yet, or we haven't even started it yet in some cases. So, you can see the survey window. The survey results were delivered and broken down, and then, we provided principal training, starting to go through the Board of Education results. We'll be able to check that one off after tonight. District-wide action planning is very close to being done. I'm going to walk you through that. And then, we will talk about how that school-by-school action planning happens as well. Ultimately, make sure we make those necessary changes and move the needle, and ultimately, this will, we believe, a highly engaged faculty that promotes. I think it's very clear that that is something that will create conditions that can lead to increased student achievement. If you look at, again, in a more granular level, what's been happening, you can see there's been intensive work in November and December here thus far, in terms of going through those results at multiple cabinet meetings, sharing it with the downtown leadership club, which is our district office team, sharing it all the different levels of principal meetings, as well as the all-principal meeting, and now, sharing it with the board. We're going to then really drive this into some action steps moving forward at the school level as well as the district level. And last year, we identified three areas for improvement: understanding professional needs, district actions are consistent with their words, and leaders encouraging employees to share their ideas to improve performance. You can see that we moved the needle slightly in those areas. The biggest growth was three points on actions and words. This year, when we aggregated and spent time with the staff, we really weren't, we really thought this net promoter score jumped out as something that was an opportunity for us to spend more time on. It was new, but why was it powerful? When you look at how closely that aligns with our vision of being the first choice, well, gosh, then this is something we've really got to ask. We've got to talk directly to our staff and faculty across the district to find out, what are you seeing? What are you experiencing? So, that's a huge priority. We're also continuing to focus on the professional needs. That is way lower than we'd like it to be. And then, the consistency of actions and words. When you talk about 41 different sites, we know that that's going to continue to be a challenge, so it's a great opportunity to listen to faculty. What we're actually doing to make that happen is laid out on this slide here. Rounding, we're focusing on the net promoter and the student results and actions. So, today, I was at Washington Elementary. The second, the first question I asked the faculty is, what are you working on? And I'm really asking them about things they're doing to address gaps in student achievement, and so, I get to hear things they're doing at the teacher level, the team of teacher level, and the school level, as well as if there's any co-curricular before and after school. So, they're answering those questions, or having a nice discussion about that. Then, the second question I'm asking ties, I used to ask about challenges generally. I now frame, do you have any challenges, by talking about this words and actions lining up, so we get great feedback, and it's a lot more specific. When I just asked about challenges, sometimes I would get, well, I'm mad because so-and-so didn't get their paperwork back to me, which is fine. But what I'm finding, when I frame it around a global issue like the district's words and actions matching up, I'm finding I'm getting much higher-level system improvement feedback that I can use, and people are using Let's Talk to share when they have an email or different mechanisms we have as a district to deal with their individual concerns. And then, the third question, I'm diving in, and I'm walking them through net promoter. In many cases, the faculty has already started this conversation about their engagement and their net promoter score, but I love walking them through the explanation. I think there's value in just talking about this. And then, I ask them, what kind of things are, what would it look like if we improved our net promoter score in your school? I'm really focusing right now on promoting their own school, and I have that information laid out in terms of how they're doing, and also following up with opportunities to have, talk about how we would be able to promote the district. Very, very telling, very valuable. I'm going to have 41 opportunities to do that. I'm 10 in right now, and it's been really, really good. The second piece is tying it into the action planning process for continuous improvement for schools and departments. Every department is doing this. Every school is doing this. The superintendent coming in once per year with the chief of communications and some other team members is valuable, but I really think building an action plan at the school level is really key to this work, so we're seeing that. And we're really listening specifically on that third area of emphasis, which I'm not covering in the faculty meetings this year. I did last year, which is the PD piece. We're really looking at how our academic calendar, our professional development offerings, our career pathways for teachers and adults, how can those be improved by listening to the faculty? You'll see a lot of those changes in place in terms of how we ran Institute Day this year. You'll see even more of those changes in what our academic calendar, our proposed academic calendar looks like for next year because of those changes. We're going to continue to listen and learn to make sure that we move the needle in that area. And then, finally, principal support. We're going to continue to drive this conversation in the principal meetings, because ultimately, what we see is, time and time again, those correlations that play out on a quantitative level being very apparent on a qualitative level when you come out and visit a building. When you see a highly engaged faculty and you see a faculty that has a high net promoter score, those faculty meetings feel different. There's a sense, and one of the common elements we see is, in many, many cases, we have a principal that has been in that building and built rapport and trust with a teacher leadership team over an extended period of time, and that creates really strong conditions for when initiatives roll out, when tough changes come through. Those faculty groups have a resiliency that allows them to function very differently, and you can just feel it in those buildings with that stability. But it's not just stability. It's using that data and having those tough conversations and systems on a regular basis. So, we're rounding, we're action planning, we're really refining our PD, and we're ultimately supporting our principals around this, because this is ultimately about creating the conditions and the cultural conditions. One of my all-time favorite Peter Drucker quotes is, "Culture eats strategy for breakfast." We can have the best-laid district-wide plan, but building by building needs to have, and department by department, needs to have a culture where they are passionate about solving the problems that get in the way, because this work gets tough when you talk about increasing student achievement in every building, and this is really foundational work for us. Again, back to the survey. And with that, I'm going to hand the, I'm going to awkwardly hand it back here so that we have the ability to toggle between slides there.
Who would like to start? Do you want to hit the button, anybody?
The light might come on.
All right. I actually just had one question. So, the slide, the question about cellphone usage feels a lot different than the rest of the, is that something you typically ask about, or were you asked to ask that question?
We asked.
So, that was a question that was asked to be put on it, just to gather some feedback from those within the school buildings about the impact of cellphone usage. It's not, to your point, it's not one that we typically ask. It does, it does stand out, but while we had everyone's attention, we figured we would ask this question just to provide some data around cellphone policy.
So, Tim, just for adification, it was district leadership team. We're having conversations about cellphone and the impact it has, and it was all, you know, there was no data, no metrics, and so, Kelly Monson said, why don't we put a question on the survey to see this is really a problem that we need to address, or is this just something we think we need to address? So, that's how it made it there.
My question is on the building administrator drop. Building administrator is defined as principal or assistant principals?
Would that be?
Yes. All right. So, that's about 200 and some people probably, or maybe, not that quite.
About 115.
All righty, okay. So, they, billing administrators have the hardest jobs in the whole district, I think, so there's probably some correlation there, but they're, that, to me, I think we need to dig deeper in on that one to find out what is, what's driving that, if it's something, some work, some support that they're not getting from their administrators or whatever, that kind of thing. So, I'm hoping we're digging into that one.
One of the things we did, there's two things, changes we made. That really jumped off at us as well. We didn't include that as one of our three overriding strategies, but one action we took is a very different approach to how we plan our school leadership team meetings that involve our continuous improvement services and schools team, and I'm getting involved in those meetings now, and I think we've really thought about how we can really present a very clear and unified message in those meetings. Number two, I now round with principals when I go into the building. Dr. Vosberg has been suggesting for a while that I carve out some time during those visits, and it's been really valuable. When I visit a school, I now tour the school with the principal for as close to an hour as we can squeeze in, and then, spend another half hour or so just having a one-on-one conversation. And I think we're getting some great insights about how we can address some of those principal and assistant principal engagement issues through that focus. So, I think my team, the team came up with some really good suggestions, and 10 visits in, I'm really, really pleased that we've added those protocols.
My last one is on net promoter score, and to me, the two questions that contribute to that are basically loyalty questions. You know, am I loyal to this district? Am I loyal to the school that I work in? And there could be lots of reasons why, we don't know why someone would have a negative score here. So, how are we going to find out what's driving that?
So, yeah, I don't, so loyalty is something to consider as far as net promoter score in itself. I think it goes back to, you know, Henry Ford's philosophy of, you know, you want to build a car that you want to be able to buy, you know, in the sense of the quality that you want to put into it. One of the things I looked at is that that correlation piece between engagement and net promoter score can help define some of the issues that are having that impact, because we know, we can identify using the correlational analysis of the factors that are influencing engagement. And given the mathematical relationship we see between engagement and net promoter score, by proxy, we can identify that maybe some of those issues that are impacting engagement are also having a negative impact on the net promoter score as well.
And this is just a comment. We, we will, we all have a tendency to focus on what's broken, what's a negative number or whatever, but when you look at the overall engagement, I'm still reading that, is that our overall staff engagement is at 77%, and so, that's pretty good. So, that's a So that's a comment.
It is, it is a positive thing. That's actually one of the things I want to dovetail on, is that that's why we include these areas of strength within this report as well. A lot of times in school and district reform, we take our eyes off of what is going well to focus on what is bad, and suddenly the things we're going well aren't going so well so more, which is why we want to make sure that we're including these slides to keep, continue to focus on the positive things as well.
Mr. Connor, you're next.
My first comment is that doing management for so many years, I've gone through this process many times, and I did send some questions in advance, which frankly are kind of hard for somebody to respond to quickly. So I'll review kind of the questions I sent, but one thing I didn't, which I kind of implied in my questions is, so if you look at something like Gallup, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with Gallup, they do an engagement survey that's been around for decades and decades, and they have a lot of longitudinal data that their correlation numbers are off of. So my one comment here is, so for example, they have questions that tend not to make sense to people today, but 30 years ago, those questions did. And they have kept those questions, by the way, and defended on the correlation to engagement because it's, the time period is so long. So my first question for you is, from a methodology standpoint, or method I should say, standpoint, how long a period of time are these correlation numbers based on? Because I assume they're more general to your survey.
So the correlations that we're looking at within this particular survey are, it's a self-contained dataset. They're correlations of your data to your data.
Okay. Because one of the questions that I really asked was the context, and I'll just read what I said is, I said, I assume that the K-12 inside folks will comment on or provide perspective for the numbers, so we'll have a sense of proportion. In other words, are these a standard number of replies and by groups and schools, similar for results? Hey, is recognition agreement typically around 32 or 31 percent, which was the difference between the two years? So I think there's a contextual question. So if our correlations are off our data, one of the things that leaps to my mind and has always been valuable from the management standpoint is, so how do we sit with the universe in general? And I think that'll be something that, even though the correlations then are off our data, I'd be real curious to know, you know, what we've got in terms of comparatives. Is it 32 percent at all medium to kind of large-sized districts and so forth? So that would be, and you and I talked, full disclosure beforehand, so that would be kind of a context question.
So there's a couple of questions to sort of answer within that, one of which is going to be the participation rate. When you look at the literature on participation rate, it ranges anywhere from 30 to 90 percent. And really what you're trying to capture with a participation rate is non-response bias, meaning how much your results look if everyone took the survey as compared to what it is that you have. The threshold that we set for representative for an employee-based survey is 50 percent. So we look to say that if we get 50 percent participation, it's giving us a pretty good idea. Anything that's over that, we're even closer to what we're looking at here. So when we look at this, we have a 58 percent participation rate, which from the districts that we survey across the country is actually on the higher side of things. Usually most districts just squeak past that 50 percent mark, and then they call it a day. We actually work very closely with districts to really nag when participation is looking low to make sure that the data is good, that people are, the messaging is going out there to encourage people to take the survey. I think we sent out about four or five different reminders to non-responsives to make sure that they took the survey as well. When we talk about the context of the specific data itself, what we want to take a look at right now is this medium-sized district benchmark. That's really where the good context is. Why we go with a medium-sized benchmark is because we have districts that take the survey that are 2,000 students, we have districts that take the survey that are 186,000 students. So we want to narrow the band as much as we possibly can so that we're not just looking at the 186,000 student data. So that's why we go with that median point right there. When we look at that benchmark right there, you are very much in line, give or take that one percentage point. You look at the benchmark, they have, the benchmark itself has a higher proportion of highly engaged staff, but when you look at that overall engagement, they're very similar in that regard. When you get in the specifics of the actual data itself, we will be providing a benchmark report within a month or two. It'll actually be based on weighted scores as opposed to overall percentages, again, to make sure that we're equalizing the data. I can speak anecdotally that a lot of the times, the district scores are going to be the ones that have the most negativity. So district leaders' actions are consistent with their words. That is a, that is a score that we see actively negative across the way. We look at the one that you wanted 31, 31 percent, there are some districts that score below that, there are some districts that score above that. But we really see a lot of negativity around interactions with district leadership. We see a lot of negativity around feedback and recognition. We've done some focus groups around those areas, we've gotten some good understanding of what's impacting those. But really, the one thing that we want to drive in on this today is that when you take a look at, sorry, give me one second to get there, the weighted score for my workload is reasonable, we can compare that to a national norm, but what we know based on this correlational analysis within your self-contained dataset is that that's not really having a strong negative impact on your engagement data as you compare to the benchmark. So the benchmark itself is functional to give you that context, and we actually did the year-to-year so you could see where you were compared to last year, which was when we looked at the benchmarks last year, you were below the benchmarks on a lot of the items. But the idea here being is that you're below the benchmark on engagement, and we want to focus in on the factors that are going to, that are both having a positive influence and that are actually having, that you want to work on to improve, make engagement even stronger.
So a couple of questions. So on the workload is reasonable, which I found to be actually one of the more interesting ones, it's relatively lower on the correlation to engagement, so I'm going to be really curious when you do your final analysis, all the correlation factors. That's kind of the, one of the things that I'll be looking for. But what leapt on that one is, do you as a group have a sense of non-education related on that workload question? Because I, you know, I'm, one of the curiosities that I've got is the correlation frankly of workload to a lot of these numbers. So do you have any sense of what other industries?
We do not have any sense of other industries. What that, the origin of that question came from reading through a lot of different qualitative datasets related to the survey and seeing a lot jumping out that we're being asked to do more with less, grading in the evening, you know, fewer planning periods, those sorts of things. And so we wanted to put that question on the survey to, one, see where people stood with it, and, two, to see if that actually had a strong impact on engagement. So here we see it's below that median as far as that average score, but it's not above the median in correlation to engagement. Median, I think on this one is about .52, so you're almost .1 below the correlation there.
Yeah, so I am going to be very interested in that, and I did notice that there was a disparity on that one. Because I would have thought that might have driven some of this. From a, again, a method standpoint, from the district standpoint, is there an intention on maybe focus groups, because this might correlate more on the individual level, is to ask, I mean, one of the things in having done some of this myself personally is, you tend to do surveys and focus groups, and then some individual, that's kind of a method that's used. And because one of the things that struck me on the net promoter was, you know, what are the direct factors on that net promoter? I mean, that would have been, you know, one of the things that I think as, you know, here are the direct factors that individuals see as really hitting that. And I don't know if that's an area where you think you've got enough data to maybe influence what some of those factors are. But I know for me, the net promoter, which I'm really extremely happy that that's there because I think that's a real telling part. And one, I have two side notes that are about industry in general, and to say that one of the questions that we ask, and I know a lot of companies, and I'll speak for financials because that's mostly where I've spent the majority of my time, the question that financials will typically ask is, do our staff buy our financial products? And that's, that's a real, and that is a real question, and I won't tell you across all the folks I've worked for, but that, that has a real correlation in some ways to, if you will, the engagement. So that's one thing. So I'll, you know, and when I read this, that question leapt to my mind is, in a typical school district, is it fairly standard that people say, hey, in this particular profession, you know, we feel very good about the product we're doing? Or is it one of those groups that tends to be very, if you will, inwardly focused and tends to say, well, it's not where I want it, therefore, you know, I'm not as engaged? So that's one question. And then the second is, in terms of accountability on this, I will just say that at all levels of management, at several of the places where I've worked, engagement was a factor upon which you were judged as a manager. So, yeah, if there were five things or five areas, employee engagement was actually, and I'm making it up, but let's say 15 percent of your overall rating was based on that. So that would be, the one question is, what are we going to do as a district on that for accountability? And then the second is, I'm very curious if K-12 has seen this as a trend where accountability for these numbers tend to be a result that comes out of all the numbers, or is that not something that a lot of school districts engage in?
Answer the second question first. From a management perspective, I think we're committed to collaboratively addressing the data district-wide rather than attacking it in terms of the evaluation process. I think as we move down the line, those are things that we can look at, but right now, we're two years in, we really want to continue to drive participation rates, make it low stakes, really not have any incentives to compromise in any way, modifications, and I think we will adjust when appropriate. But at this point, we, I don't think we're ready culturally to start holding people accountable for that.
And by the way, I was not, so let me be clear, I wasn't really making that as a suggestion.
Right, right, right. Just to be clear, that's just our take on it, yeah.
All I was saying is that that, in my experience, has been something that has been applied. And I realize that particularly in the public sector, there's a lot of landmines with that. So, but what I did want to say is, how much is that true? And if you look at the building administrator numbers, that to me was interesting, that it has gone down, what, five, seven?
Six.
Yeah, six, seven percentage points. And as an actual, if you will, number, and you're not supposed to say percentage of percentage, I know that, since I don't have the raw data, so, but that's just about 10 percent. I mean, so that's a significant number. And I think that would be my one suggestion on some of this, and I've, and again, for full transparency, one of the things in my questions for the community of the whole that I sent to Dr. Jarrett was, it would be nice to have some of the numbers, even if they're results at numbers and not the raw numbers, for obvious reasons, it would be nice to have some of that so you could do some of your own analysis. Because to me, you know, I always ask myself what factors might be correlated. So I'm hoping that when we get this, and you said it was a month away or a couple months?
Yeah, so we're still, we're aggregating our most recent benchmarks right now. Like, as you saw, those new numbers up there from the new, that we're still working through those data right now from the last school year, and aggregating all that together. So we have a little bit of time. A little early, so usually it's, Rockford is probably at the very beginning of a cycle of when we typically do an employee engagement survey, so we're usually not doing them until a little bit later in the year. That's why we just don't have those data just yet. But let me, if I can just respond to a couple of the comments and questions that you made there. One of the things is you asked about, you know, deeper dives. You talked about, you know, using the survey for breadth and then going to depth of that. I think the listening sessions that Dr. Jarrett are doing is going to accomplish that purpose very well of getting some really hands-on district. For a, for a focus group perspective, it's very hard to do it to get a good representative cross-section in a district this large, because you have to be in so many places.
And you did make that point on the random sampling too, by the way, right up front. That was, I noticed that.
So the other side of it as well is that, you know, when we do this sort of work, you ask sort of about what other districts do when it comes to the employee engagement data. When it comes to any kind of data that may paint a district in a not-so-bright light or anything like that, we typically see one of two reactions. Reaction number one is to either attack the process or dismiss it or try to bury it or hide it. Reaction number two is to really embrace it and learn from it and lean into it. And what I would go so far as to say is, again, working with very small districts to very large districts across this country, what I've seen Rockford do as far as creating process and creating and using those data to inform practice and process is the most innovative approach I've seen to working with these data and looking at these employee engagement results. It's actually setting a model for what we're trying to do with other districts across the country as well. So when it comes to actually embracing the data and trying to do something with them, Rockford is on the, is really on the front edge of actually using that appropriately.
I think the only thing I'll end with is.
Excellent answer.
Very good, very good answer is that I, maybe nobody else is curious on this, but man, what would you have given to have had these numbers from 20 years ago or 15 years ago? I mean, really. So again, kudos to the district. Yeah, whatever the timeframe is, I'm sorry, 20 years ago for me.
Yeah.
Anyway, but what I would say is really kudos to the administration for doing this, and for both the attention and, again, I'm glad you said what you said, because it certainly would have been my impression that the follow-up actually has been pretty good, and that there really is thought behind, we're not just doing this in a perfunctory way, we're really doing this because this is an important thing. So again, thank you.
Mr. Escobedo.
All right, a couple of quick ones for me. You know, the cellphone usage was actually pretty interesting and not what I would expect. Do we, I guess, if there's any follow-up, could we get any breakdown by grade levels, middle school, high school? Because I think that may answer some of my questions, just not what I was expecting.
Sure, we can cut those data for sure. That's no problem.
Middle schools, middle school, high school, I think may, you know, teachers may come from a different perspective and.
Yeah, absolutely. We can cut those data for you, and what we'll do is, well, our channel is, we work directly with Dr. Kelly Munson, so we'll send those data over to her disaggregated to distribute.
Mrs. McCulloch is the queen of the cellphone survey.
I'm really pushing. No, I was the one who was pushing in DLT, I've been for three years, saying that teachers, principals, parents, everybody are saying that cellphone usage is interfering with their kids' learning. And we haven't really been upholding our policy consistently across the district, and what can we do about that? And that's how we got to this question. And we were only initially going to ask middle and high school secondary, and there was a principal in the room who said, no, I am elementary, and that's our problem in elementary school too. So I think it's good information, but I think that when we look at how we're going to enforce the policy and what we're going to do, and I was enough pushing this that I was going to ask, you know, from a board perspective, we need to come forward, we need to do something either from the disciplinary code, we need to do something. And the numbers were so enlightening for administration that they are actually taking on a PD essay, I always get the essay, because it's an issue, and it is something that impacts achievement. And so if that's what we're all about is achievement, how do we get kids focused so that they can achieve? So, but that would be interesting.
I would just add, so there's more to come. And this is being worked on as a project in the DLT group, and we have a lot of teachers that are participating and telling us what has worked in their rooms and what hasn't worked.
And then the only other question I had was, you know, we talked a lot about net promoter score, and kind of putting my parent hat on, you know, at the end of the day, what it boils down to is, I'm wondering if, have you ever asked the question, have it ever been asked in the form of, you know, if you had kids, do you have kids, would you send them to this school? Or do you send them to this school or to a Rockford Public School? Or do you send them to this school or to a Rockford Public School? Has it ever been asked in that form?
So...
But anyway, that's, to me, that's a litmus test, right?
So there is a district we work with that we have posed that question too, is, and we have to sort of work our way to it, is, you know, are you the parent of a school-aged child? Do you live within the boundaries of X school district? And then, you know, do you send your child to the school, within a school, within this district? And then the why or why not? So it's just a matter of, you may have just parents who live out of boundary, so there may be some logistical issues there. But it is a question that we have posed within it. But I think the net promoter score at the same time gets at that as well, as far as whether or not you would actually recommend it, whether you have a child or not, because you've got that frontline perspective of what's going on within that particular school, especially at the school level. And so, you know, it begs the question of what Dr. Jarrett is getting into, the sort of why or why not, or what does it look like for you to make, to recommend that school?
I think that's an excellent question. Number one, we, I think we do get at some of that during the faculty discussions, it's very telling. And number two, we are going to ask the net promoter question to our parents as well, so we will catch some of the faculty that are, that are our actual parents, I guess, that did choose us, so I guess they would be pulled in that way. But I think that's an interesting idea to talk about whether or not we could, we could, without adding too much link to the survey, I think we'd all be curious to know what that dataset would look like. But in the, in the short time, we will at least get to see what our net promoter score is for parents when we give the parent, is that correct, our parent engagement survey?
That is correct. So we're doing the parent survey within the springtime, and we've got the net promoter score as well. The other, the follow-up survey that Dr. Jarrett referenced for employee engagement is actually going to consist of the engagement questions, the nine questions, and then the net promoter score questions as well.
And just another quick question, while, you know, given your experience with a lot of different districts and all over the country is, what can you tell us about net, you know, net promoter score and just engagement, correlating it to academic growth? Correlation, interesting to hear here.
It's a very interesting question. When we talk actually about, you know, engagement itself, you're looking at your engaged employees, your highly engaged employees, your highly engaged teachers and staff members are going to be the ones who are going way above and beyond what it is as respected of them to really work with students and be able to do that. They're the ones who are going to be learning specific techniques, they're going to be the ones learning individualized instruction, they're going to be the ones who are staying after school to come up with tutoring and individual plans and things like that. And so when you look at your numbers of the twenty-two percent highly engaged, those are the folks that are doing that sort of work to make that happen. So when you see the people putting in that extra effort, that's when you're going to start to see the academic achievement grow and make some gains with it as well. When we've done some correlations, we've done it with one of our larger school districts in Virginia, where we actually were able to see that connection between achievement and engagement to show that it's the positive correlation there, that there is a relationship between an engaged workforce and student learning.
So were you able to see, I'm assuming as, year-over-year, as that promoter or engagement drew that academic achievement also?
So we're through our first cycle right now with net promoter.
Okay.
It's more along the lines of the employee engagement aspect of it. But again, looking at that mathematical connection between the two, it becomes a proxy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. McCulloch?
Also interesting to know, I'm really stuck on this slide thirty-five about engagement by years of service. Interesting to see the achievement based on years of service, because I'm, and I get it that life gets in the way, so the eleven to fifteen years, I think, is when you said, you know, they're starting families, what have we got, thirty-five-year-old, thirty-five, forty-year-old people, and they, but is that pretty much standard across the country?
So, when you look at this graph right here, you sort of see that inverted boomerang. What you sort of see nationally is when you get to that sixteen to twenty-year mark, you tend to see it come up a little bit more than what we see here. But we do tend to see that negative slope that you see from first-year teachers into that eleven to fifteen-year mark, and then it starts to come back up as, you know, a lot of what the literature tells us is that, you know, as you have children, you're more of your priority shift at that eleven to fifteen-year mark is like that real peak of when the kids are needing a lot, soccer practice, all that sort of stuff, it's competing with your ability to stay after school. Once your children start becoming more independent, you're starting to hit that sixteen to twenty-year mark, and you get to become more engaged in what you're doing professionally as well.
Right. And so I would expect to see a boomerang, and I would expect the twenty-one-year-old plus to be higher than it is. Your initial comment was that it comes back up, but sixteen percent is not a lot above fifteen percent for highly engaged.
No, I...
And so...
It speaks a lot to our career.
Right.
Well, isn't it an industry? I mean, you just work with educational systems, right?
Correct.
Be interesting to know in engineering, for example, and other industries, you know, what that engagement looks like. And if there's anything we can do, I mean, is that...
So it is an opportunity to be able to look at, you know, as someone just mentioned, the whole career growth and where am I going to go? Am I stuck just in this role and I've become burned out because I'm doing the same thing? Like I said, we tend to see it come up more as you get further along in your career than what we're seeing in these data right here. But we can take a look at other datasets as well and cut these data, the same correlational analysis you see district-wide, we do each of those for the school, we can cut those data by the years of service as well to see if there's any specific issues that are jumping out at those top lines of it that may be impacting engagement from those perspectives.
And your comment, okay, different, your comment earlier about doing a survey and asking about, one of the questions as you led into, does your child attend, that Mr. Escobedo was talking about, or would you, would you as a parent recommend? And you made the comment that, well, if they don't live in the boundary, they can't be there. But living in the boundary is also a choice. So you can't exclude the fact that they aren't making a choice by not living in the boundary.
No, and I understand that completely. And what I would say is, to qualify the, my response to the question, the place where we've asked that is a, is a state where there's a lot more school choice options available, a lot of charters, a lot of voucher programs, those sorts of things as well. So there is a lot more freedom to move within and out of the boundaries of a district, whether or not you're living in boundaries or not. So I apologize for the misconception there, because to your point, it is a choice to live within the boundaries of a school district. It's something that people often ask about when they're purchasing a home.
Mm-hmm. And then the last, and I've chimed in a couple of times on the cell phone question, because is that something that you've ever asked a district before?
Personally, me, no. I've not asked the question about the cell phone usage within a district before. About twenty years ago, there was a paper floating around that cell phones were going to be the new personal computers of the classroom, and that everyone's going to have accessibility and availability. And what I saw in my own experience as an educator was, you know, probably what you're seeing here was that they were a distraction. And so it's not something that a lot of districts have asked about before. They tend to either have policies or not. I think, again, you're being very proactive and actually collecting data against the anecdotal to make a determination about how you want to proceed.
Yes, and thank you again to Ms. Munson for making that recommendation.
Mr. Connor, did you have another question?
I'll just say that, to Mrs. McCulloch's question, it's actually kind of an interesting one, because one of the things that I would be interested in for this one is correlations around not just time, because I assume that was time in teaching, right? When you ask that question, not how long have you been with this district, although it might be implied.
So it's actually something, it's a pre-populated data point based on rate of hire.
Well, the only reason I ask that is that those of you on the corporate side know that the tenure in the private sector has really changed. It's skewed from very high to much lower. So if you were to look at the numbers now, I would just say, compared to frankly twenty years ago, you'd have to do a lot of this much earlier in people's careers, because the numbers are way different.
Yeah, I would agree.
But one of the things I will say is, one of the things that we worried about is, essentially because the competitive environment is really different in the sense that somebody who's got ten years really can go anywhere, depending on what your skill set is. So there's a lot of concern around this very topic. And so one of the things I would say is, my gut check is, the public sector doesn't have it quite in that sense, that people frankly, rather than shifting jobs, will tend to disengage, would be, I mean, that's a, that would be a premise, and maybe it's not true, but it might be, if you will, a warning flag on what you do with people and the kinds of opportunities that you offer them. Because again, on the private sector side, the middle of the curve is where a lot of the attention is. Now, it's shifted to the front end because of certain skill sets, you know, data scientists and machine learning and all that, but I'll tell you, right now, we spend a lot of time talking about the middle and what you can do to keep that, and I would assume it's the same conversation here.
And let me, and let me react to that with just a little bit of research. Richard Angersall did some research on this, he's at a Penn, where he looked at the longevity of the teacher workforce in the mid-eighties. And it was this nice even bell curve from zero years to thirty years, where you had that big distribution in the middle. He then replicated that research and looked at it, I think it was like two thousand three, two thousand five time period, and it went out about three years, and then it fell off a cliff and went down like that. So you're actually seeing an impact of a harder time keeping people in the education workforce as part of that engagement process as well, based on Angersall's work.
Probably contributing to the teacher shortage.
Well, yeah, but there's also a change, okay, so they're driven, many, by pension. You know, the, but now that the pension has changed and their retirement is what, the entering sixty-seven is when they can retire?
Tier two is...
Tier two is sixty-seven. I think that's going to have a big impact as well. But I know a lot of people who stay in it just because I have so many, it's kind of like the military, okay, I'm in thirteen, if I get to twenty, you know, if I, sort of the same sort of thing, and how many years can I buy? Right, so...
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for being here and a great job.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next is, Michael Phillips is going to talk to us about numbers with the Fall Housing Report.
I'm here to present the Fall Housing Report. Tonight's board packet included five spreadsheets that kind of broke down our enrollment in a few different ways. The first being all enrollment by location, enrollment by grade, birth through three and pre-K enrollment, elementary enrollment, which includes K through five, and finally, secondary enrollment, which is grade six through twelve. The snapshot in time we are looking at is fiscal year twelve through fiscal year nineteen, October of fiscal year nineteen. Our total enrollment numbers include students from charter schools, birth through three, pre-K, and K through twelve. In fiscal year nineteen, we saw a slight increase of three hundred and seventy-eight students in total enrollment. As you look at the enrollment by location spreadsheet, you'll notice various increases and decreases at building locations throughout the district. We can attribute some of this to student movement within attendance zones. I think the important thing I want to point out is, we're certainly seeing relatively steady enrollment year over year with no drastic swings between the years. Our charter, our charter school enrollment includes Chicago International Charter School, Galapagos, and Legacy. One thing I'd like to point out here, CICS had seen some large spikes in enrollment in fiscal years fourteen, fifteen, but we're seeing declining, some declining enrollments over fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen. Galapagos and Legacy are seeing fairly steady improvement, or steady enrollment year over year. The one thing I'd like to point out, Galapagos and CICS serve K through eight students, where Legacy serves K through twelve. If we rolled up that three hundred and fifteen enrollment number for fiscal year nineteen, thirty-three of those students are enrolled in grades nine through twelve. As we look at the birth through three and pre-K enrollment, excuse me, we see pretty much steady enrollment in the birth through three. We did have increased enrollment in our pre-K by three hundred and fifty-five students this fiscal year. If we peel away our pre-K, our birth through three, and our charter schools, and just take a look at our K through, K through twelve students in RPS buildings, we had a slight increase of fifty-eight students, but once again, just pointing out the fact that we see steady, steady enrollment across, across the years. In our elementary schools, we had a slight decrease this year by seventy-five students, but once again, no large swings across the years. The one thing I would like to point out, we are seeing some enrollment pressures in our southern attendance zone, specifically Riverdale, Hillman, and Whitehead. To overcome some of these pressures, the district has purchased and installed modular classrooms in the past. We currently have eight throughout the district, one at Auburn, one at Brookview, one at Haskell, one at Hillman, two at Johnson, and two at Riverdale. This summer, we'll be adding a second at Hillman, and we'll be adding one at Whitehead in the spring of 2019. We actually have that modular classroom currently sitting at Auburn High School, ready to be deployed. Lastly, if we take a look at our secondary enrollment, grade six through twelve, we had a slight increase of eighty-eight students in FY nineteen, but once again, we're just seeing steady, steady enrollment across, across the years. Some key points to take away, while we're seeing declining Rockford population, we're seeing relatively flat enrollment, no drastic swings, no peaks or valleys. Total enrollment of twenty-eight thousand eight seventy, an increase of three hundred and seventy-eight students this fiscal year. We had a slight increase in students that are residing in our buildings, and then once again, just that we have some elementary school enrollment pressures in our southern attendance zones that we are keeping an eye on.
Okay. Um, Mr. Questions? Mr. Connor or Mrs. McCulloch, you'll go first.
Well, I'd just like for you to speak to the increase in the preschool, in the pre-K enrollment. It's a big jump, and there's a reason for that, so...
Sure. Actually, this is, at this point in time, by the Fall Housing Report, we made a concerted effort over about six to seven weeks over the summer to be really focused and strategic on recruitment, screening, and placement. We had about five weekends in a row where we had our placement specialists working to enroll students prior to the first day of school. So the increase really is an increase in the number of students who were attending school already by the Fall Housing Report deadline, rather than an increase in the number of students that were serving overall. So we were able to start three hundred and fifty-five students sooner in the school year than we have historically, because we had a concerted push through our early childhood screening office to get kids in seats earlier. So we devoted quite a lot of resources to recruitment, screening, and placement. Part of that also was our collaboration with Head Start, so we were able to go right into Fairgrounds and right into Orton Keys and get those students both transported and screened and ready for the first day of school.
So, you know, this is always a little bit of a tricky area with money and preschool, and because it is not funded by the state. I know we have a grant.
We have several.
But a new grant this year, don't we, for something?
Several, yes.
Okay. Has that changed the number, because I always understood that part of the problem was transportation, because we didn't have enough seats on buses for students, basically.
We always want more seats on buses for students.
Well, I'd just like to know, have we increased the number of students that we're transporting? And if so, out of what font is that coming?
We have increased the number of students that were participating, part, that were transporting. Part of that comes from our Head Start collaboration again, there were a hundred and twenty students... Again, there were a hundred and twenty students who through that Head Start collaboration get their transportation funded through Head Start. So that gave us an increase right away. And then we're also doing work internally just to maximize transportation through lots of different problem solving. Some students get transportation one way, or we're holding off until a whole team can come together and make placement decisions on every individual child's transportation situation. So the effort is to increase and stay within budget.
Right. And, and so let's ask, I'll ask a more specific question, and that is, we have sped students who are preschool students.
Correct.
And so they should be on the preschool seats, not under the sped budget. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. This is an incredibly nuanced topic, and I don't want to misspeak to it. And we've been working since about August as a cross-functional team across specialized legal, finance, and early childhood to be sure that we're planning and screening each of our transportation placements to make sure the funding aligns with the child's needs.
Well, I just remember early on in my board career that those seats were covered under preschool, but oh, look, we can transport more kids if we say that they're undersped.
Well, truly, truly, it drives, it's driven from the child's need and the type of harness or the type of support that they need on transportation en route from their home to school and back. So it really is driven by the IEP process and the problem solving team process, but as I mentioned, we've created this cross-functional team to be sure that we're accurately aligning the funding source with the child's need.
If we looked at a report for preschool for last year, for example, I understand you to say that there are three hundred and, what'd you say, fifty-five or something like that, students who are in the seat at the beginning of the year, we get to count them, and they didn't all necessarily start right away last year. So what kind of numbers did we actually have for our preschool last year?
We're actually about flat, but what we were able to do this year with our increased grant funding was increase the number of full-day seats and the number of classrooms. While that didn't dramatically increase the number of students served in total, it did allow us to provide higher quality service to more students.
Right, and I know that we were working toward that full-day piece.
Yes.
But the cost to the district out of our funds?
Ten.
Has not changed?
No.
And the money that we receive, that the, the state money that we get, has that changed?
Yes.
Not talking about the other grants?
Yes.
Has that been, and how so?
Oh, well, it depends on the grant. I don't have all of those listed in front of me. We had an increase in funding for Prevention Initiative, which is our birth through, birth through age three. And so you saw an increase in families served, pretty dramatically since FY twelve, actually. We were fully funded for what we asked for there. We did see an increase in funding, but it was slight across PEG and PFA. So PEG is, what's PEG stand? Our preschool expansion grant, and, and PFA is preschool for all. So those two different grants. I can provide you exactly with those numbers after the meeting. I don't have them in front of me today.
Okay.
Mr. Connor.
Thank you.
Yeah. On this one, I asked a couple of things ahead of time, and, and one thing, again, full disclosure, what I've asked the administration is for both Fall Housing and the results set, not the raw data for both survey, would be good to have those in Excel format, just speaking for me. So it's a request I've made, so any other board members that would like that, that presumably would be something they would make available to everybody. So I had a, really a suggestion, and what I said, would it make sense to discuss having a standard chart built off of Fall Housing that also includes, and I was just suggesting factors such as number of faculty, school funding, potentially by building or grant, Title I or whatever, school grade standardized test results, however you would like to slice that, you know, park IAR to have across time SAT, ACT again across time, equivalents of all that. And I said that from my perspective, I could see that the Fall Housing data could also be a part of the school dashboards, but was hoping to see a district summary view. So in other words, all these are by school, and there's actually quite a few categories. So I assume it'd be fairly straightforward to take those numbers and apply them to the dashboards to, to say, you know, population and population over time and, and results. But it's kind of like the district view. So the one thing I do like is that you do have charts where you can really do the comparisons. And to me, that's, that's really valuable. So my, I guess my suggestion is that, and I'm not saying that's the right answer, but I'm saying there are probably factors that I would want to see around it. And I, and I wrote a couple of their notes that I didn't put at the time that I would put in that. So for example, one of the things that hit me, and you said it, was is there an attendant zone impact? And related to that, because we had that heat map assessment, was that a year ago, maybe two now? And what I wondered to see was the correlation, right, because now we have the actual population of the various schools, and we had the heat map, and we know that some of the boundaries have changed, and there's got to be some analysis that we could do to say, you know, here, here was the heat map, oh, and by the way, now, a year later, this is what it did to the actual schools. So that would be one thing, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, I haven't put my head into all the numbers on that, but it would seem to me that would be one part. Second part is the whys, as in W-H-Y-S, behind some of this. It kind of correlates to maybe some of the attendant zone and other factors, but it would be really interesting. And I will give you a personal example. So if you look at Cherry Valley School, their attendance went up quite a bit, and anecdotally, one of the reasons is that that, the new school has pulled in people from private sector or from private schooling. And so I'm not saying that that would be replicated, but all I was curious is to say, are there factors that we can correlate? Because some of these schools, you know, really in terms of, of what they've been, would be, I think, pretty interesting. And my example is, you know, if you look at, say, Rolling Green and Whitehead, again, part of my district, they really kind of went in opposite directions. And I wondered to myself, was that all because of how we did the attendant zones, are there other factors? And that's, when I talk about that, that's, that's really the kind of analysis. So the why behind that. And then my last is rather than being analytical, is going to be kind of a suggestion, which is, it's very interesting for those of you that don't know and probably don't care, can't blame you, but I work in a marketing department, so it really hit my ear when Mrs. Detman said, oh, yes, we spent special effort to go out and get early childhood earlier in the cycle, so it could hit that. And, you know, my marketing brain went, well, hello, shazam, maybe we ought to be taking that for like the academies or for had, name what your factor is. I'd be curious, what's the impact if we did something like that, say, for bilingual or, you know, we have a lot of things to offer. And I think one of the things I'd like to start seeing is that maybe some of these things are worthwhile. I mean, we've talked about all kinds of issues, is if we have something that we target in early childhood, something we've talked about for five years, and it seems like we've started to do some practical delivery on what I'll call the front end of the process, and it seems to me that we could track programs and dollars and other kinds of things by some of these areas, whether it's early childhood or again, you know, I'm, I'm only picking on bilingual because it's, you know, an obvious, you know, there's a number of things that we've done in terms of advertisement and so forth. Those kinds of correlations I would think would be really important, and the fact that we're flat and everybody else is down, you know, would be, to me, there's got to be some metrics behind it. So I'm glad to see these, but would like to see more on the correlations of the factors such as the attendant zone changes, heat map, and so forth. Are there other questions or comments? Mr. Rollins?
Okay. Should get new microphones.
That one was temperamental at the start of the meeting.
I have this sense that I've asked this question before, I just don't remember what the answer is. There's a, on the enrollment by grade level, there's an interesting phenomenon that occurs between eighth and ninth grade and ninth and tenth grade that starts in 2013. It didn't happen before then, at least in fiscal year 2012, where we gain eight hundred students between eighth and ninth grade and then lose eight hundred students between ninth and tenth grade. So what is that? What's going on there?
It just comes down to students being classified by chronological year or by actual credits earned.
Why would we gain eight hundred students between eighth and ninth grade?
Yeah, you have to. Well, what happens is ninth grade ends up being the largest number because you get ninth grade students, and then you also get the tenth grade students that are still ninth grade by credit.
Oh, okay. I got it.
And this, and, and that classification was changed. It's not anything different. It was the way the, the state calculated that.
Okay. And I'm just curious, like on the early childhood enrollment, there's a location other, which is just like two and one and one and four and two, like, what, what's that?
Mrs. Detman probably knows the answer to that, maybe.
I'm going to take a risk and say circles of learning.
So we have like two people at circles of learning?
Mm-hmm.
No, this is, this is numbers. No, it's, these are numbers of students.
What, what's one of your, what slide do you?
So it's Rockford Public Schools, early childhood enrollment by location, Fall Housing Reports. Well, I mean, it's, we don't have to answer that tonight, I'm just curious. We seem to have like two students out somewhere for early childhood?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tim Nelson would know the answer.
Yeah, all right, never mind. It says, yeah, if somebody wants to just shoot me an email about that, I'm just, just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
And then I do think, you know, just, I, I think we talk about being the first choice for all, all students in Rockford, and I do think that the census data shows the population is falling. The fact that our population is not falling, after taking into account the increased early childhood and after taking into account the charters, I do think that that means that we're, regardless of what our net promoter score is for our own employees, I think the community seems to be giving us a vote of confidence, and I do think that we're taking some market share away from the private schools. So I think that's a good thing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'm seeing.
All right, we'll move on now.
Ken?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. McCullough.
I, I just wanted to say, I do understand the importance of preschool, that's the place that we need to, I'm not questioning that so much. Sometimes when we do creative solutions, it's just, to me, important that we do them so that they're within the scope of how they should be done, and that has a, that was one of the questions that has been raised. And so I understand thinking outside the box, but is that how it was meant to be is, was my point. So please don't dismiss my, my support of, of early childhood.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to new business then. Next item is recruitment incentives. Claire Ferguson and Matt Zetiker.
Yes, I will turn this over to Claire Ferguson. She is our recruitment manager to talk about potential recruitment incentives for hard-to-fill positions with teachers.
There we go. As Matt said, I'm Claire Ferguson, I am the recruitment manager for the district. Tonight, I would like to talk about some recruitment incentives that we are hoping to implement. As many of us know, there is a growing national teacher shortage. That has impacted RPS two oh five for several years. We're seeing the greatest impact in our bilingual, our secondary math and science, in our special education classrooms. To put a little bit of perspective on this, for the seventeen, eighteen school year and the eighteen, nineteen school year, we started with approximately fifty vacancies in those hard-to-fill classrooms. Currently, we have thirty-two hard-to-fill vacancies that are across the district, all the way from our EC classrooms to our high schools. When we talk about recruitment, we have a three-pronged approach that we currently use. We do some standard events such as attending education fairs throughout the local colleges and universities. We travel to NIU, ISU, the University of Illinois. Loyola, DePaul, and UIC hold a joint fair every year that we attend, and then the State of Michigan holds a week-long education fair that we attend as well, where we travel to different colleges and universities. Michigan has been having a teacher surplus over the past couple of years, so we hope to continue to travel there and who we can recruit through that fair.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
We also attend some minority-specific recruitment events. This past spring, we traveled to Nashville. We went to an HBCU fair. That fair had fifteen different colleges and universities attending. We travel to Puerto Rico several times a year to recruit, as well as participate in a teaching exchange with Spain through the embassies. We also attend several bilingual-specific job fairs that are held in suburbs, and in years past, we have worked with diversity.com for our openings in our restaurants. We are exploring some other teaching exchanges, some other programs that are set up very similarly to Spain. We are just currently in the application phase with those companies and just in the beginning stages of. As we attend these fairs, we have some recruitment tools that we are able to, to speak to that we currently do that are specific to RPS two or five. We do have a pretty robust mentoring program, so every teacher that is coming into their district that's new is paired with a mentor. We also talk about the master's cohort that's available through Rockford University, as well as other teacher leadership opportunities such as our multi-classroom leaders, our curriculum implementation leaders, becoming mentors themselves, or our instructional coach positions. We are also going to be implementing a guaranteed sixth assignment at the secondary level for those that are eligible for that. And we also have a housing program that we discuss with teachers. That housing program is for those who are needing down payment assistance and they're purchasing a home. We are looking at some long-term strategies. We have been traveling to different universities and speaking to their freshman and sophomore level students about RPS and everything that it has to offer. The hope with that is then when those students are looking to do their clinical observations, they want to join us for that, and then once they've become a clinical student, they will become a student-teacher with us. We have eight current aspiring teachers, and we will be doubling that number next year. We are also looking to expand that program to other universities. Currently, we only work with NIU and Rockford University for that, and we are in talks with ISU and UIC. We're also talking with NIU about expanding that program to our secondary level because currently it's only offered in elementary classrooms. Once we have those students with us, they're student teachers, they're their aspiring teachers, the hope is to make early offers to them so that they matriculate into full-time Recruitment incentives that we are looking to implement are a three thousand dollar relocation assistance, a three thousand dollar housing assistance, and a three thousand dollar sign-on bonus. All of these would require the employee to sign a three-year promissory note and remain with RPS, and these are only going to be offered to those in those hard-to-fill vacancies. The hope is that each new candidate would have one of these that would be just for them. We would look at the individual candidate and we would say, if they're coming from Puerto Rico, they, they would probably need the relocation assistance. If they are a new student and they are outside of the greater Rockford area, they might need housing assistance. This housing assistance that we are talking about differs from the one that's currently in place because this could be used towards lease or rent, and it would not be a second lien on your mortgage, which is what the current housing assistance that is in place is. That sign-on bonus would be offered to somebody who is teaching in the greater Rockford area. Maybe they're at a private school, maybe they're at a charter school, but they aren't teaching with RPS currently. There could be a case where a candidate gets more than one of these incentives. That person could be coming from Puerto Rico, they would be teaching in a bilingual classroom, and they are also certified to teach in sped, so they potentially could get the sign-on bonus and the relocation assistance, but that would be a case-by-case basis. The thought process is that one of these would be used for each candidate. Total costs that we are looking at would be up to, but not exceeding one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The best way for us to monitor the situation and to make sure that these incentives are working for us and helping us are to just compare our year-over-year vacancies. So the data that we are So the data that we are drawing of those 50 vacancies is looking at June 1st, the very start of the school year, so in the past couple of years, it's been right around August 20th. As long as we monitor that and we track that through our Business Plus system, we would be able to see whether these incentives are working. We already use Business Plus to monitor different promissories that we have, so that's data that we are in and out all of the time, and we would be able to just track those numbers. The end goal for these incentives is to have more certified teachers in our classrooms, which would lead to greater student achievement. If we are not able to implement any of these incentives, we would probably continue to have these vacancies existing, and more subs would be needed to fill our classrooms, and then the students wouldn't be in front of certified teachers that are certified in their subject area or for their grade level.
Comments or questions for Claire? Mr. Segal?
I'm assuming your methodology for coming up with the $150,000 total maximum spend on this was you have roughly 50 vacancies and a $3,000 incentive for each, so you're at $150,000.
Yep.
But how did you come up with $3,000 as the magic number for the incentive? Was there some standard that you used?
Yeah.
This is a good number?
Yeah, so the reason that we're looking at three years is because that really gives us the ability to assess whether a teacher is performing well, and that's somebody who we would be able to continue to keep in our district. So as we're evaluating our teachers, we, the first several years are really the most impactful, so those are the years that we're able to see whether those teachers are performing well. And it's just the easiest measurable set for us to look at.
I guess I was thinking more about the dollars and not the time, and the $3,000, and how did you arrive?
Yeah, I can jump in on that one.
Thanks.
So we've examined a little bit in terms of what other districts have done. Other states like Texas, California have offered observant amount of sign-on bonuses for teachers to come down. In fact, we lost one of our aspiring teachers to Texas, I think it was a $10,000 bonus. Danville in Illinois issues $5,000 sign-on bonus for special ed teachers currently, and so we tried to balance, because I think this is going to be something really hard where we draw back, and if we went too far and offered too much, this also ties to what Claire was speaking to in terms of tying it to a three-year promissory note, so a thousand basically dollars a year, so that we can kind of, in terms of a payment process, understanding, you know, if you were to leave early, so we kind of settled on that being a clean number, and then we can get feedback if that wasn't enough. You know, if we're not seeing that these are successful, we may have some opportunity to find out, you know, what are other districts doing, or feedback from those candidates to say, yeah, I would have taken five. And so we wanted to start a little bit on the lighter side with the chance to increase.
Ms. McCullough?
You've answered one of my questions, which, just to understand, is that you're going to give, what, $1,000 at the start of each of the three years?
No, it would be all upfront, but the promissory note that they would sign is a three-year, and so then we would work the payment schedule if they were to leave us on a pro rata basis, so it would be a third, a third in terms of payback.
Nobody ever just says you have to give it all back?
Well, we would honor the time that they spent with us.
When these teachers come to us, if they have experience in another area, one of the conversations I've had with teachers who I've wanted to come to the district is that they don't start at the same level, that however we determine where they enter our salary schedule is, they're not feeling is fair. I mean, and that's a personal, how do we determine that? Is it their numbers of years in their particular, I mean, how do we determine that? So that I have an answer?
Yep, so we look at a combination of experience and education. So with that means all of your transcripts come to us, so the more education you have, as well as your combined total years of experience, slots you into our salary scale.
So, total years of experience as a teacher?
Yep.
So if you come in, say you were a teacher, and then you become a social worker, and you come to us, yours, are we just looking at social worker years, or are we looking at the teacher years with the social worker years? Because that was one of them.
Right, that would be something that Vanessa Ward, who's in charge of our compliance, would come to me, and we'd have a discussion. We have to make a decision on applicable experience in terms of what position they come in. And really, in terms of other districts, both regionally and in the state, we are actually very, very good about honoring more years than many districts. A lot of districts have cut off with the number of years that they'll give somebody that comes into a district. Oftentimes, it's between eight and 10 years. We actually give, if it's applicable, credits all the way through.
Okay. Well, and you spoke to, or I just mentioned social worker, you spoke to teaching shortages, but we constantly have contracts coming through for speech therapists. Why would they not be included, since they're under the contract, why would they not be included as a hard-to-fill position? And be offered the same sort of bonuses, sign-on bonuses?
Right, that's a great question, and it's not, it's something we could discuss, I wouldn't necessarily outlaw it. We were just looking at the classroom in general. Oftentimes, there aren't those contracted options for, say, a bilingual teacher that we have for a social worker or potentially speech path, where there are services that we can purchase to still provide those services to students. And so our focus as a first step were those classrooms where we weren't having certified teachers impacting those students.
But wouldn't we rather have our own employees than a bunch of contracted employees if given an opportunity?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, and is social work also hard to, I mean, at one point, are we still low on the numbers?
We're not as low as we used to be. I would still say that some of these areas, we, the number of students who are impacted is greater in these hard-to-fill areas. You know, if you look at a secondary bilingual teacher who potentially could teach up to 150 kids a day versus a social worker who may have on their caseload 25 students. And so I was looking at number of students impacted, but again, it doesn't mean that we can't look at other various special ed positions in terms of incorporating that into some of these initiatives.
I mean, we have to meet our needs statewide.
Yep.
I just think, as long as you're doing it, let's think about that, is my thought. So talk to me about the guaranteed sixth assignment, that is just, we're just saying that for secondary, that if you come to us, we guarantee that we'll give you a sixth hour at the 20% bump.
Yep, so we would work with Dr. Bosberg and the principals in terms of looking at the master's schedule and what teachers are currently in the building that would be certified to teach a sixth assignment, so we could go through that scheduling and offer it to our current REA members. But then if there's an opportunity to engage in conversation with a teacher from a different district who may already teach six classes, and we can say, you know, we could hire you as this ex-teacher at X high school, you would have six classes, but we'd have the potential to pay you $10,000 to $11,000 more for that sixth assignment. And it wouldn't cost us as a district anything extra, because we already reserve those dollars for 20% of that, the staff at each of those buildings for a sixth assignment.
Right, especially if they're at the lower end of the scale, but if you have, let me just ask you an if question, if you have a teacher who's been teaching the sixth hour, I mean, because these are hard-to-fill positions, so you're going to be taking it from somebody who's in a hard-to-fill position, right? It's a science position, it's a bilingual position, and you're saying, we're going to guarantee it to the person coming in, will we be taking it away from staff that are already filling that?
Yeah, the first step would be to offer it to the current staff through the master scheduling, knowing that we would need it. So we would take, let's take physics, for example, and we would need an extra .2 physics. The master's schedule will come out, the principal at that building would have an opportunity to discuss with the current physics teacher if they would want that sixth assignment, and then if they do, then we would honor that. But there are some teachers that, in those hard-to-fills, where we have to create those six assignments that don't want the extra .2. So then, as a recruiting team with Claire and Mercedes, they, in working with the principals, they would know which buildings and which positions would have six assignments left. So it's just, it's just another tool that we could potentially use with recruitment of existing teachers, maybe in surrounding areas.
Right. It's just one of those, if you have people that we've already hired and are engaged
Yep, sure, absolutely. We want to offer them first.
That we want to offer them first.
Yep, absolutely.
But I also understand that if that's the carrot we need, but we can't just make up positions here.
Correct.
Or just pay them for something they're not doing.
Correct.
So our aspiring teacher program, gosh, I didn't remember that it was just elementary, I don't know where I was, especially when most of these problems they're having are secondary, the secondary math, the secondary reading, not reading, I'm sorry, science. Why didn't we, why do we not have?
It's the multi-classroom.
Is it just because?
It's tied with a very well-established multi-classroom leader model, and we're going to have to develop a secondary version of that, that is much less developed in terms of national models to plug into. And candidly, if you look at our desire to increase student achievement across the district, targeting that aspiring teacher concept, it's helping us a big way. Just to give you an example, I was at Washington today for a site visit. Three of the four aspiring teachers at Washington Elementary are bilingual teachers. That's going to be a huge recruiting advantage for us, and I'm talking to the principal, you know, I think all of those student teachers are going to be potential candidates for us to extend job opportunity, offers to, and potentially early, if they're performing at a very high level. And so it really was neat to see those folks in action today and to know that that's occurring in a district, in a school that serves a very high-need population in terms of language and low-income students. We are getting students some, some potential teachers of great, great student teaching experience, so I don't think it's a question of or, I think it's a question of and, and how quickly we can roll out the model. We have, definitely have aspirations to build secondary-level partnerships as well, so we can do the exact same thing. It would be awesome to envision a physics teacher every year having an aspiring teacher, for example, and dividing up that caseload, and then, and at the secondary level, it functions much more in the districts that have done it, much more like a TA at the college level, like a graduate assistant almost, where you can, where you can divide up the workload that way. It isn't quite as efficient, and so we're still figuring out ways to do it, but I think we would love to extend that as part of our long-term strategy.
What, give me a breakdown of teacher shortage in the secondary versus elementary? Just percentage of the ones we haven't filled?
Sure, sure. So currently, as I said, we have 32 vacancies. So of those, 10 of them for sure at the secondary level, and then the other ones between our bilingual and our SPED classrooms, those are spread K through 12. So I don't have it right in front of me, the exact breakdown of which classrooms those are. Majority of the bilingual classrooms are at our elementary level, some of them are EC as well.
And I love the idea that we're going to branch out to other schools, especially since ISU is known as a teaching institution, but what will we do to help those aspiring teachers, if that's the way we go at it, or if they're just going to be student teachers, from a housing perspective? Because my understanding is that is a limitation when somebody wants, you know, unless your, unless your family's in town and you went to school there and you're going to come back and stay with family, that's, those aren't the only ones we want. We want to be able to recruit from the full spectrum. Is there any way that we can work with the community? I don't know, do we have any ideas about that?
Yeah, so we've already been talking to landlords about what that would look like as far as furnished, short-term leases, things that a student would really need. You know, as you're a student teacher, you're only in that unit or in that house, whichever it may be, for four months. So we've been in discussion with several landlords, we've attended several different Rockford Housing Association, well, not Rockford Housing Association, it's a Rockford Housing or Landlord Association meetings to talk to them about what that would look like. So initially, we went to, you went to the first meeting, I believe, and then the second meeting we attended was really just a meeting. So we've been in communication with them already. At this point, we haven't had an aspiring teacher or a student teacher who needs housing, so we don't know exactly what that would look like until that person is in front of us.
And part of the aspiring teacher, because of the compensation, the models that we've looked at, and what I would discuss with the board if we get into that position, is currently, it's $15,000. We've discussed with landlords in terms of a discount on rent if they work with our district, and then to take $5,000 out of that 15 upfront to a landlord for, to lower that monthly rent for an aspiring teacher. So if it's normally an $800 a month, kind of lease rent per month, they would give us a discount off the top, and then we would take $5,000 and apply that right to housing, so that the aspiring teacher still works off the $10,000, but the need for housing, we are subsidizing with that money.
All good, but I just remembered, I did listen to the podcast from Ms. Don Graham and her conversation about how expensive it is for student teachers, because they're paying tuition while they're student teaching. If they go outside their, where they live, they still have their rental for the rest of their lease, and now they have to pay to be somewhere else, so how can we make it so that it's a no net loss for them to be able to come? I mean, we can't pay their tuition and...
No, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to look and ask permission for the board to subsidize that as a district, in terms of their rent.
Some thoughts, because I think such your best catch is, is they're coming on, if they feel connected to us.
Yep.
So thanks for your work in that area.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah. So I sent a number of questions upfront, and I won't go through all the details, but one of them I said is, what is the current shortages? And they sent a list, so I'm sure you can share that with the entire board. And I thought it was pretty interesting, they, just overall, there were 10 vacancies in bilingual, six at math, four science, and 12 special ed. So it was kind of an interesting distribution curve, and they had it by school. And one of the things I'll say is that if you look at the numbers, there was a lot of .2, .4s spread across, but there was two schools that stood out for my money. One is no shocker, and that's Kennedy, one science, two math, two special ed, full-time. And the other, what was a little surprising to me was Jefferson had two science, two math, and one bilingual, which is math and science. So I think one of the things that I got out of that was that, I'm kind of curious why that one school has those full-time openings. Then, the talk, the question I had was, are the recommended incentives consistent with other districts and so forth? And that's when the answer came back about Danville, the $5,000. So it was kind of interesting, and then they also mentioned some of the other incentives considered were supply account, I don't know if you all read this, but the supply account for all new teachers, up to 250, and I think, one of the things I'll say, you had several things, discount dining and so forth, is that, you know, clearly, it would be interesting to see like what has been effective on some of those, because I know you were talking about some things and you're questioning, but I do think, and my one comment is, that if you, if I look at our recruiting, we've actually gone beyond just the dollar amounts and said, are there other kinds of things that would attract people to the area? And I think, so I'm glad to see that there's some thought. And then, one of the points I say is, if reducing the needs for subs is one of the major goals, what empirical evidence is there that subs are mostly a secondary issue? Because a lot of these were in the secondary, or is it just the most egregious? And the answer came back is that this is really an overall issue. So I think the one suggestion here is to understand the impact to the elementary, or the elementary versus secondary and some of that, because it was just kind of interesting to see where the openings were. The last question was, what's the timing of the incentives in relation to the standard teacher recruitment cycle? And the answer came back, the greatest number of new hires happens from February to August, and these incentives will be in place by peak hiring system or season. And so I think that is one of the things, and it seemed like Mrs. McCullough was not putting words in her mouth, but I don't know if you were thinking of going beyond the $150,000, sounded kind of like it, but I think this is one, we're seeing that impact, I think, and particularly how it would hit that cycle would be something, because I noticed you put up the recruiting schedule, and of course, the question is, is all this in place for the recruiting schedule, and what would be the impact? So that would be the one suggestion that I'd have, is to follow up on that cycle and let us know. The only other thing is, you mentioned, Daniel, I'm really kind of surprised that some of the schools, if you will, not in the middle of nowhere, but, you know, you get Purya, you get some of the others that have some of the same issues about geographical distance, and I'd be particularly interested in some of them and what was successful, because we would certainly have that in common.
Yeah, but I've looked at it a little bit in terms of especially minority recruitment, with some of the similar cities, and some of their advantages is they have larger universities that are connected to them, so... them, so Bradley being a natural pipeline, Springfield being closer to ISU. And so there's some, sometimes there's some larger universities that play a role, but I can't nab exactly that is causation, but there are some things that are a little bit different. But most districts, you know, in terms of that, are urban in our size, have not gone down the path of incentives as of yet, but I think it's only a matter of time.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I don't need an answer to this, but I, I'm hoping that you're, at some point in time, you'll be able to tell whether or not this program was effective or not. You know, that if you don't give any of the money out, it didn't work, obviously.
Exactly.
Yes. So anyway, all right. That, that's my comment.
Mr. Rollins?
I'm just curious how the HBCU fair went and how the efforts in Puerto Rico are going.
Puerto Rico's going fairly well. I, since I've been in my role, have traveled with the team twice, and we've, I've overseen one other additional team going. We have 11 teachers from Puerto Rico, and then we have one joining us in January and two that are committed to joining us in August from our most recent trip. And we'll go back there probably two more times before the beginning of the next school year. The HBCU fair wasn't very successful. I believe we had nine candidates that we spoke to, and none of them applied. So the way I track data when I go to a fair is, I always send a follow-up immediately after, and I scan and send resumes to every principal that has a vacancy. And then I just track that every 30 days to see whether that candidate has applied as well as send a follow-up, just to gauge interest, to see if they have questions, to try to make sure that we're on the forefront of their mind. Biggest feedback from candidates down there is the distance for them to move. So from going warm weather to not warm weather is a big deterrent, and we can't really combat that right now.
Okay. And the Puerto Rico teachers, are we retaining the ones that we've, that we're getting?
Yes. So I think our first Puerto Rico trip was two years ago.
Yep.
Yep. So they're all still with us.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Connor, do you have a follow-up?
I just, yeah, I do have a follow-up on the HBCU question. It's kind of interesting that none applied. So I guess, given that that's been an area of emphasis, have we looked at, if you will, systemic reasons? I mean, distance and all that, I get, but you're going to get that, you know, for a number of different colleges. So it's kind of, you know, I think the follow-up and why would be something that I think we'd be interested in. And if I might say so, one of the things that we've found in recruitment is you have to be there year after year. Because one of the things is, if, in our case, it's for internships, those kinds of things, but student teaching, relatively equivalent, is it's the relationship over a long period of time. And I would wonder if maybe, excuse me gracious, the feedback from, you know, faculty and trying to find out some of the reasons, I know, I think that would be very helpful to us to, to maybe dig a little bit deeper, especially since that's an area for recruitment that we're very interested in.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo, I think you're next.
Yeah, a quick, a couple of quick comments. So Mr. Rollins had suggested a while back, and I think Mr. Saticar paid for over-hiring at the beginning for the next year to plan for, if we know we're going to have vacancies, what's the worst-case scenario? We ended up with more teachers than we needed, and at the end of the day, if we have a goal to improve academic achievement, then over-hiring if you got more teachers, well, I think that's an okay price to pay.
Better place.
Yes. So there was one, just one follow-up. I thought that was a really good, you know, just plan of attack for future. Hopefully, you guys have it planned for next year. And then the other one was, you know, talked a little bit about marketing, Mr. Connor mentioned. But, you know, so I've talked to a few teachers since my time on the board, who seem to turn around kids regardless of what the kids they get. And one of the, one of the common factors is that they seem to have a calling for teaching, not just teaching as a job, but teaching as, for whatever reasons. I mean, I've gotten reasons as, it was a religious, well, we can't do anything about that, but, you know, some people have just, that's their calling. Other folks, I talked to another teacher who actually left a very good, you know, very rich district out in the suburbs, and came here because he wanted a challenge. This is what he wanted to do. I guess what I'm saying here is, you know, when we look at special niches and special marketing, what could you guys do to try to, aside from just hiring, hiring, going after that niche, wherever that may be? Because at the end of the day, those folks may be more interested and willing, flexible to move wherever the job is, if you can attract them.
Good point.
Yeah, and I think, and I'll speak for Claire, in January, we'll be presenting to the board a larger kind of recruitment-to-retention-development process for the board to see, not only how are we recruiting, but when we get them, how are we training them, and continue to retain them and grow them. And I think part to, Mr. Escobedo, to your point, is, is some of that is around training. And who do we put our student teachers with and our aspiring teachers with? So if we're going to put our student teachers and aspiring teachers with, with teachers that we see turn around kids year over year in terms of growth, academic achievement, and have that real zest and passion for the profession, those are who we want our student teachers with. Because then they're going to be trained by the best. And so we are developing what that training and professional development looks like for our teacher leaders. And Dr. Jared and I have worked and are developing a concept of potentially looking at reducing the number of people who get student teachers, but then incentivizing them to have them semester over semester, so that we can ensure that they're being placed with the best teachers that we can.
And then the other just side comment, I know I used to travel to Puerto Rico a while back, probably about eight years since I was there. And one of the, you know, talking to coworkers down there, one of the things that struck me was that they, they commenting that, you know, the, the younger generations, they're fully bilingual, and in some cases, more so English-bound than Spanish-bound. I guess what I'm getting to is, looking at Puerto Rico in terms of not just bilingual teachers, but I don't know what their population looks like for teachers in general, that just not think of them in that perspective.
We actually do have two Puerto Rico teachers that are not in a bilingual classroom currently. Jason Gray is the one who recruited them on the very first trip that he went on. So we do keep that in mind while we're down there, definitely.
Thank you.
Mr. Segal, are you next?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask the same question Jaime just asked. But I guess I'll also ask, do you have to overcome the objection of temperature when recruiting in Puerto Rico? Because from what I understand, it's a little nicer there than this here.
We don't have to.
Is that an objection that comes up?
It is, yes, for some people.
And how does that end up getting addressed successfully to our Puerto Rican candidates that, and is that same overcoming of that objection applied to the students that are HBCUs?
It may. One of the ways that is best addressed for the Puerto Rico teachers is to talk to our teachers who are currently here. I can't speak to what was said for the initial group that came with, because I wasn't a member of that team. But the way that we have connected our Puerto Rico teachers who are currently here with the ones who are recruiting is what's most helpful. So they're able to say, this wasn't that bad, or what have you.
We, we also create a videotape down in Puerto Rico that actually shows us in the snow. I mean, we are very upfront in what it, what it looks like. And then the other thing that we have going for us in terms of Puerto Rico is they've closed over 60 schools in the last three years. So they need a job. And our, our folks at HBCU, we're fighting with other school districts that are in the South, and they get to pick and choose. Where our Puerto Rico candidates, you know, potentially were teaching in schools just a year before, and the school is no longer there.
Right. Ms. McCullough? Were you, were you done? Okay.
Were you?
Ms. McCullough?
So the location piece, you said that there's some extra teachers in Michigan? My question is this, has the process for licensure, if you're in another state moving here, becau-
It's gotten easier. We have more reciprocity with those states.
That was an issue at one point in time when we were trying to move people over. And I think, as I jokingly said earlier, I mean, Michigan, they know snow. So, I mean, that's not an issue, but if, if licensure is. On your recruitment tools here, the one thing I don't see is the fact that we still have housing incentive, not the one you're talking about, the 3,000, but that will help them purchase a home?
Yeah.
You're using that as a marketing tool as well, I'm sure, but it's just not listed. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Rollins?
So the comment you made about Puerto Rico just made me want to ask the question, and I, and I have a feeling it's because the pension systems are completely different. Chicago's in the same position. So Chicago just lost 10,000 students this year. They're down 10,000 students. They're closing schools too. Can we recruit out of Chicago, or can we not, because they're in a completely different pension system and it doesn't transfer over? Is that, is that the problem that we've got?
No, we, so we've, in recent history, Chicago has not been a market we've really tried to focus on. Claire and her team have now started to make connections. She has listed the joint effort that UIC, DePaul, and Loyola put on in terms of a teacher fair. So we have now made inroads into there to start that recruiting process. So it's a new, actually, new endeavor. Last year was the first year that we really had our footprint in Chicago at all. Follow it up with UIC, where we have a relationship now with some faculty member at UIC. So we're starting to make inroads a little bit more, but we haven't had anything come out of that as, as of yet.
Okay. Okay. And Mr. Connor?
Very quickly, what I'll say is, the salaries in Chicago are way higher. Or, it's cost of living too, but the salaries are a whole lot higher. But actually, what I was going to say is more on the weather part. If you read the recent buried climate change report, what you can tell yourself is-
20 years will be that.
Yeah. In about, not that many years. We're talking like, you know, by 2025 or something, that, you know, the, the average temperature of, say, where we are is going to be very like central Illinois. So all you'd have to do is say, hey, hang around long enough, and our weather will be the same as Cairo. So anyway.
I'll have a very positive report in 2025.
All right. Thank you, Claire. Good, good job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Mr. Phillips again on the safety survey.
So every 10 years, each local board is required to survey its school buildings and bring forward any project recommendations in accordance with 2-3.12 of the health safety code. The last survey and report was completed in 2009. The total estimated project cost was approximately $8 million, which included construction costs of $6.8 million, contingencies of $580,000, and A and E fees of $660,000. Project scopes included roof and HVAC upgrades, as well as fire alarm and stage curtain replacements, just to name a few. I have included a list of additional projects in the PDSA, if anybody's interested. The health life safety code is a document prepared by the State Board of Education with the advice of the Department of Public Health, the Capital Development Board, and the State Fire Marshal, to conserve health, safety, and general welfare of our students, staff, faculty, and visitors to our buildings. A part of the decennial safety survey process, the architects will check the accuracy of our school safety reference plans, verify information shown on the facility inventory records, and make corrections as necessary. In the course of inspections, violations are noted and prioritized as either urgent or required. A violation labeled urgent is a precedent and immediate hazard to, to our students. These issues need to be corrected in 12 months. A violation labeled required creates an unsafe environment but presents less of a hazard, so it just needs to be taken care of in a timely manner. The resulting safety survey report is presented to the board for approval. Upon approval, the report is forwarded to the regional superintendent, and if no deficiencies are found, he will, they will send that on to the state superintendent. All reporting is done via the Illinois Web Application Security System. Reports are due to the Regional Office of Education by December 15, 2019, and to the Illinois State Board of Education by December 31 of 2019. We'd like to take advantage of the upcoming holiday break in December to allow the architectural firms access to our buildings to begin the survey work. Since state law requires districts to complete the decennial safety survey, alternative choices are limited. One option would have been to advertise a request for qualifications to allow other architects the opportunity to respond. The architectural firms we are recommending were selected on the basis of satisfactory relationship for past services provided to the district. Due to timing, the, the request for qualifications was not a viable option at this time. The design and construction team divided safety survey work between three architectural firms. Their survey responsibilities are as follows. Bellis Firm of Architecture will survey 10 locations, primarily early childhood centers and grade schools, totaling 544,000 square feet. Larson and Darby will be surveying seven locations, which includes the high schools and both stadiums, totaling 1.4 million square feet. And lastly, Richard L. Johnson will survey 27 locations, which includes the remaining elementary schools and seven middle schools, totaling 2 million square feet. As part of the survey report, the architects will develop budget estimates for violations that are identified during their inspections. The decennial, the, the survey is aligned with strategic goal three, optimal climate, and goal five, fiscal, fiscal and operational stewardship. The survey report will help us identify incorrect issues that impact the climate and spaces our students, staff, and faculty learn and work in. This process will help us extend the life of buildings and critical life safety infrastructure. The total cost, the design and construction team recommends awarding contracts to the following firms. Bellis Firm of Architecture for $56,600, Larson and Darby for $178,600, and Richard L. Johnson for $224,420, for a total project cost of $459,520. The project costs will be split between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. Per contract, the architectural firms will complete and bill 40% of the project by June 30, 2019. The remaining 60% of the project will be completed and billed no later than December 31, 2019. The design and construction team evaluated each firm's fee, comparing to past capital and life safety projects to ensure competitive pricing. All amendments submitted as part of the 2019 decennial safety survey will be tracked through the Illinois Web Application Security System. On an annual basis, the executive director of facilities will update the cabinet and the school board on project progress, and will submit completed amendments and costs for approval of closure. I'd like to point out a few key dates that are critical to meeting our final completion date of December 31, 2019. The first being next Tuesday, December 11, board approval of the architectural services contracts. If those contracts are approved, this will allow our teams to begin their survey work over the holiday break. September 1 of 2019, architects will be substantially complete with their survey work and report. In November, we would be presenting the final report to the committee as a whole, and we'd be bringing that to the November board meeting for approval. Upon approval, we would submit that to the Regional Office of Education on December 15, and then that would be submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education on December 31. The decennial safety survey is a critical process that helps the district identify- The decennial safety survey is a critical process that helps the district identify building deficiencies, ensuring the accuracy of school safety reference plans, verifying information on the facility inventory records, and making corrections as necessary. By completing this survey, the district will be able to request authorization to finance repairs and alterations discovered during the survey using fire prevention and safety On reporting back, the executive director of facilities will provide updates to cabinet and board at key milestones throughout the decennial safety survey process to ensure timely completion and submission to the Illinois State Board of Education. All critical path dates and progress updates are outlined in an attached action plan. On an annual basis, the executive director of facilities will provide project updates on amendments that were approved during the survey, and will submit completed projects for approval of closure. One thing I would like to add that I learned today, that we will be retiring $9.9 million in bonds that were used for life safety in February of 2020. And also, we receive $1.9 million from our annual fire prevention and safety tax levy, the majority of that going to salaries within, within the facilities and operations staff.
Questions or comments for Michael? Mr. Rollins.
You got any one specific?
Okay. The Bellis contract includes Stiles. What did, somebody remind me, what are we doing at Stiles? Okay, is that the whole building?
The other half.
Do we, so do we have to do the survey for the entire building?
We would, I, I would have to get back to you on that, on that question. Yeah, I'll get, I will research that and get back to you.
I guess it's something to keep in mind when we, you know, rent these facilities out to third parties, that this is, this sort of thing is an additional cost. Right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, this'll come up at our December 11th, 4:00. The next new item is Dr. Rossberg, who is gonna be talking about programs at, three different programs.
Can I suggest that we put C, D, and E together, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, you have three items in front of you, Explore Learning, Learning A-Z, and Thinking Maps. These are Title I purchases. They're on the agenda tonight because we have triggered the $10,000 limit per board policy 4.6, so these are products that are used at our elementary schools currently, and these particular schools are waiting for board approval because they've triggered the $10,000 limit.
These come from a catalog of...
Yeah, we call it a Title I menu.
Okay.
Yes.
So, that, they've already been vetted for...
Correct. The curriculum department has vetted them to make sure that they are grade level appropriate and aligned to standards, our IT department reviews. Two of these items would be considered blended learning items, web-based products, so they've reviewed them to make sure we're in compliance with student data integrity rules, and then we can also support the products with our infrastructure, they're web-based, so there's not much that we need to do to support those. And then, and then that's pretty much the vetting process at that level.
Okay. Mr. Siegel.
First, I'd like to commend you on the use of the word of automaticity. That's amazing. That sounds a lot like you have students who didn't really reap the benefit of, I think you've called it drill and kill, or some such thing. What's that?
Skill and drill?
Yeah, maybe. Where maybe, I, I don't know, this just kinda struck me as like, like, almost like digital flashcards. Is there gonna be time set aside for the kids to be exposed to this? And how does this work into the regular day?
So, I got a confession to make. I did not write the executive summaries, these are written by the principals, so...
Oh, automaticity is a fantastic word.
I approve it, I review it, I modify it, but I can't take credit for that.
Okay.
So...
Well, that's very honest of you, thank you.
But, these are supplemental materials, they carve out time in the day, it could be 10 minutes a day, 15 minutes a day, to provide extra support supplementing the core instruction.
I know 10 or 15 minutes doesn't sound like a whole lot, but is that realistic, that we're able to carve that, that time out for these students? And does this actually require buying, I didn't realize it's Title I money, and so it's not coming out of local funds or anything, but, what's that?
It's still money.
Yeah, it's still, still money, and this worked out to, what, about $3,300 per school? Your two schools were, were doing this.
If I could just interject on this, what we're trying to do with bringing these forward is to really increase transparency and equalize what's occurring, where if just one school buys these, the board wouldn't see it. We're trying to do a much better job of aggregating these to make sure the board does know these are available, but really, I would think this is, this is about two or three levels down in terms of, it's really different than a district-wide curriculum adoption where we'd expect a real high level of scrutiny, where the scrutiny, at the board level, where the scrutiny is really coming here is the academic teams are all coming together, the schools team and the ed services team really come together and determine what items are eligible to go on a menu of services that schools can order from. So, these are on that menu and have been vetted by the academic teams across the board to order. In many cases, these are already being used in other schools that were under the $10,000 threshold in some cases, so what we're gonna do moving forward, just in, in general with all these, is we're gonna bring them forward in, in a much larger scale before, so you can kinda get a sense of pretty much all of the different programming options that are on the menu at once, rather than them kinda trickling in like they are now. So, just wanted to give you that perspective here, that this is really stuff that is optional, it's being used in, it's being, it's been placed on a menu, and principals have been told you can order these items off the, off the menu, but it has not been board-approved because it hadn't hit the 10,000 threshold before today. So, just to give you that context of the level of governance, you know, we certainly want you to ask any questions, but really, these are things that we have deemed choices that the building can make, not something that meet the needs of their students, as opposed to meeting the needs of every, it may or may not meet the need of every single student in the district, depending on what the option is. Just to give you that background, not to in any way refute questions you're asking, but I just wanted to give you the perspective of the context of these types of items.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions or comments? Okay, this will also come to the board for a final vote on December 11th. We do have no public speakers tonight. Any other business?
Good question.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo.
So, there's map testing, I believe, going on, possibly finishing in a lot of schools, as you can just kind of, yes, I'm interested in seeing when our next update will be, what the numbers look like, and what we're seeing early data.
It's too early to pull too many reports. Everybody is in the middle of testing right now. Students and teachers can get their results immediately. In terms of what's valuable for us as a district, we really wait until closer to the end of the testing window. Once that testing window ends on December 21st, 24 hours later, we have the whole broad view of the data, so I would anticipate being able to share those results in January when we come back from winter break, although it will not be me personally.
Okay.
But someone, someone will share those results.
First week of January, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Not a motion, a second for adjournment?
So, Mr. Connor?
Second. Second by Mr. Rollins, everybody in favor? Poll the same sign, we are adjourned at 7:52.